...the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to the meeting this evening. We have a pretty full agenda. Are you ready to meet more people?
Here.
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 Bushian, here.
Here.
Jowski.
Here.
Walkerly.
Here.
Now, Maybes, here.
Here.
Peters.
They throw in.
Here.
John.
For the record, Mr. Fulton is excused. He had the works this evening, so he notified me on Monday. Okay, public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open and Solid Meeting Act has been given to the Board of Clerk in the following manner: posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Clerk's office, and emailed to the Director's spec and the current post. I'm going to need a motion for the approval of the January 9th minutes. Any questions, first of all? Any questions, events? Take second motion?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
They will oppose? Okay, thank you. All right. First thing I'd like to do, a little bit of housekeeping. We had a conversation with Mr. Rowan. I just want to make sure everyone's clear on who is and is not disqualified to vote for certain variances. Mr. Ramon, could you stand on that?
Yes. The Mayor and Chairman, in this case, Sis and Nick, cannot vote on a used variance.
What we have on the line?
If they are not here, an ordinance that would fill their seat is bound by the same incapacities, no, they cannot vote for a used variance. Okay, so tonight, Nick and Mayor cannot vote, I believe, or participate on the one used variance that we have, hence the change of the use.
Five limits.
Right.
Okay, now regarding variances, or like bulk variances and things of that nature, that's...
No, they're able to see variance. They can vote on and enjoy their orders.
Okay, does everyone understand that?
As far as saying Tony tonight is filling in for Ron, so if he follows an order and he's going to be a writer, he won't go on either the D or the C variance.
Correct. Okay, thank you. All right. New business, I guess what we'd like to do is, why don't we get Mr. Burns up, and we'll take a look at his variance for his rights, please? All right, first of all, I just want to make the board aware that Mr. Pettit has not had the occasion to go out and do a report on this. Mr. Pettit did not have this application in hand until I emailed it to him yesterday for some reason. I visited the site. I know Vice Chairman visited the site, Mr. Rockley. Is anyone not comfortable listening to this application without Mr. Pettit? It's a pretty straightforward application, and I think, yes.
I would normally do a full report on this site with an application, bulk variances. Word was about your fact, we decided we wouldn't do it.
Pretty expensive to do the application. So this longer, I think it's a pretty straightforward application. Okay, Mr. Burns, what can we do for you, sir?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mark, if you raise your right hand, you solemn swear that testimony you're about to do this for tonight is true, it's one act, but you're not?
Yes, it is. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here. Appreciate you allowing me to apply. I've had a porch from the front of my house since I moved in in 1993. The last few years that porch has started to rot away. In the last half of the year, it was so bad that I started using our whole family, so I used the rear door of the house for safety purposes. I started out just to replace the porch, and I decided to make it a little bit larger. I have a very small house, and I can use a little extra room spread out. So I'm seeking a variance. I have a hardship, in fact, that I've already built most of this porch. I did stop building it. I did not know that I needed a permit, and I stopped building it, and Chris Mecca had instructed me that I would need a variance. I was told the porch that I built was too large for the current standards. I was told I needed 25-foot clearance to my setback, and I have 19. I do have just under 29 foot to the front of my street, so it's slightly different from my setback. The structure that I have built sticks out no further than both my neighbor's concepts.
Want to produce any closed porch?
No, no, it isn't.
Okay, I will attest to that. I was there on Saturday, and I did measure it. His steps do not map any further than neighborhood to the left, to the right. Are you planning on putting a roof over it, sir?
No, I don't.
Pretty much just to structure the way it sits, or maybe some...
Just around. Get the, uh...
You're planning on putting concrete steps, sir, or?
No, I don't.
Leave it as well.
I leave it as well.
Okay. Mark, where, or you're going to, when you prescribed the porch, have you taken a measurement to how far that is from your property lawn? I heard you say 19 feet?
19 foot two. What is my, I'm real familiar with what is listed as my setback on the...
Well, good for your plot. If you look at the survey that was submitted, it shows that the existing dwelling is 26.75 feet on the right-of-way lawn. The application indicates that the depth of the porch is eight foot two inches.
And its deepest, yes.
So that would give you a front row setback of probably 18.6 feet. So variance would be 18.6 over 25, so far. The setback from that, that industry is not consistent. It's inconsistent, I'm sure of that. One of the houses has her entrance on the side of the house. But to be able to determine who's the closest and not go any further than that would be the most possible. The variance actually takes into consideration in the market zone, and indicates that in a situation where more than half of the existing homes that are on the street on the same side are less than required setback, you can build to the, as close as the closest home for 10 feet, whichever's great. Time confusing, but I think that basically what that's saying is if all the homes, or the homes and associated porches are consistent, it's okay. But in this situation... But if it's inconsistent, you can't go any further than the closest, didn't you, right? Or 10 feet, whichever's great. So it's a minimum of 10 feet. But this is 18.6, and it's been decedded, and it's consistent with the other house, so.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Burns? Any professionals?
Yeah, what was the size of the old porch?
It was 10 foot wide by 5 foot deep.
The new one's 28 foot, right?
Uh, 24 foot wide.
Yeah, I think, I think the, Scott, I think the farm, the house, I think it's quite situated.
Be no problem with sidewalk. Do you need to perform with our sidewalk? Like, 24 feet, I think, that leaves you eight feet on each side. So our rule says 14 or a minimum, aggregate 14 or a minimum. Your proof of service, Mr. Burns, did you send it out?
Yes, I did. I give everything to you, and I posted it into...
Okay, because I, if you're nearing something out of the carrier post on the paperwork, I'm sure you have it, it's your personal...
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Need a motion on the floor to approve the application for Mr. Burns? Yes, public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, is application only? They can have a motion, both the public portion of these?
Set them to the second.
Public portion is now closed. Need a motion on the floor to approve of Mr. Burns' application?
I'm going to approve.
Motion to may be seconded. Roll call again.
Maybes?
Yes.
Now, Maybes?
Yes.
The entry?
Yes.
Walkerly?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Jowski?
Yes.
And the class?
Yes.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to talk to Lena and Michael White, please.
This is a used variance, Captain and Mayor, so you and I would request that you reclude yourself at this time.
Don't forget.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Ron calling up. This was, this was the emergency policy.
That's what we're here for.
Good evening, Howard. Good evening.
If you may, both raise your right hands and solemn swear in front of the testimony you're about to do this for tonight's proof of an act of the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Members of the board, the chair lady, this is an application for a used variance. This property, I believe, is situated in the commercial district along Black Forest Pike. This property did have some history to it. It looks like it was built as a residence years ago, and at one time, back in 2005, it appears that the planning board did grant a used variance to permit combined residential and commercial use. The property is approximately 42 feet by 100 feet, and what I would note is, it's an uninforming lot, even in our commercials, though our commercial orders require 60-foot front footage. What the board can listen to, and should, these were the proofs, should, would show that there is a hardship, and the history of the use of the property, and what other properties are in the surrounding areas. And I told this way that she may want to take a look, and then explain that to the board when she, when her husband gives a testimony.
Yes, our property has been vacant for three years. It's been difficult to sell, as well as rent, or as commercial. It looks like a house. I did check, I checked, and it is a house that's four duplexes, it's directly across the street from, and then there's a apartment building, right on the corner. So there are residential areas, or properties in the area. So what we're asking is for a used variance for, to be residential. We were informed by, well, I was informed, when we, when the builder had listed as residential only, I stated, "No, it's residential slash commercial," when he's given to confirm it, so when I had called and spoke with Mr. Matt, I just said, "No, it's only commercial." So that was a whole issue, because it's like, okay, we can't even read it as partial residential, because, you know, by being vacant for six months, I was informed that it reverts back to commercial. So this is our hardship, and it's still vacant. Right now, we are still getting, you know, responses asking, well, how much is the house renting? So, you know, we're getting, you know, responses for residential, but nothing for commercial.
You guys live in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
If you were to rent this out, who would be in charge of taking care of the property itself?
My stepmother.
A lot of times, it's very hard for absentee owners. You know, we go by, sometimes the lawn is a bit high, and...
Oh, no, we have, we have maintenance with the lawn service in New Jersey. Keep the grass covered, and keep the snow removed. They're local. Okay, all right.
Did I misunderstand your testimony from previous meeting? Not testimony, but your informal, that you and your husband were going to occupy the property?
No.
Did I misunderstand that?
Yes. I agree. I was there, and I think it is pretty much in concert with the rest of the neighborhood as far as the amount of residential properties versus the commercial properties.
The board, the chair lady, and board, the board can impose conditions on any use change. So if the board was inclined to make a condition that this would, that used variance would be granted, subjecting it not only to be used as a single-family property, that may eliminate a future buyer coming in and trying to turn it into a new place, or dry place, or... If the board would be so, you don't have to put a condition on a variance, but you are in fact, if there would be a concern to the board of, of such future uses of... So my idea was that, you know, if it were to turn it into a residence, the option, the one that was residing, and we had absentee... Well, I think they gave testimony that they do have a lawn service or some law to do with it. And also, we have maintenance, a person that, you know... Probably recently, initially, a whole front lawn was that up? Yeah, because what happened, it was the main border, the... Was the border, okay. The border, the main border. Because when I don't buy, it was all covered up at the...
Yeah, they got that permit. This was the whole...
It looked like they made some fee to attempt a restoration. Right, right. We intend on once the weather beats better, to put some grass in.
What is, what is the building in the back being used for?
The buildings in the back, not, those are all, oh, in the back, right now, there's not, it's, it's all, all the same.
Okay, so there's nothing in there at this point?
And these doors, have you seen, are all different rooms in the...
Yes, in the building, yes.
What function makes that work?
Now, is this, is this ready in its present state to be residential, or are you going to need to do some type of reconstruction inside, so it can be for, for bedroom, kitchen, and whatnot?
We feel at this point it's ready.
There's air conditioning there.
Do you have any bathrooms in the house?
Well, it has one floor and two halves, two halves downstairs and one floor upstairs.
Anyone else have any questions? Yeah, I think. Anyone have any questions for the professionals? John, do you want to go over your...
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We basically set forth the same thing that this is what I'm doing about the reasons that the proofs have to be sort of whatever. Particularly, that the site is perfectly suited for proposed use, and then in a negative that it's not going to cause a substantial detriment to the public. The fact that this site, that this building was previously residential, commercial, you know, when moved back to it's a residential thing, goes to the fact that it is suited, you know, to what they're looking to use it for, and the fact that it can't rent commercially, and then, you know, the negative is just being built, and there's a substantial detriment to the public, should the variance be granted.
And I also had comments from Chief Dianno. He was out after property, and he sees no problem regarding public safety, so he's also heard this application. Would anyone from the public wish to speak on this application, is application only? Okay, say no one, you pushing to speak in the public? Can't hear most of that public portion? Thank you. First, we had a roll call for the approval.
Make a motion on the floor, this chair, I swear, can I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion to may by Mr. Jowski, settled by Mr. Rockley.
Maybes?
Yes.
I think so.
Yes.
Bushian, yes.
Jowski?
Yes.
See if there are any ones?
I think we vote yes. Humber, yes.
All right, congratulations. We wish you all the best. Could we get that filled up quickly?
Yes. This is how they take up all your business. What will happen, this resolution will be memorialized on watchbeak, and you will send you out of court. Thank you, thanks so much. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
We have, my, your...
Why do you have to sit up there, now you're very familiar with this application?
I have a whole board here.
Mr. Thatcher?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to break up the client, Uineko?
Sir, please raise your right hand. The testimony you're about to do this for this evening, you swear or affirm that it's true, it's one act, it's best to be known. Mr. Chairlady, and members of the board, this is the application. It's essentially a bulk variance application to allow Mr., is that anything? To construct a, looks like a garage, a 24 by 40-foot garage, where our ordinance only allows a maximum of 15 by 24. He's also asking a variance from our height ordinance, which sets forth a maximum height of accessory building of 12 feet. He's seeking 18 feet, he's permitted to construct a building 18 feet high. He is also appeared, because of the height of the building, to have an enclosed second floor, whereas our ordinance does not permit an enclosed second floor on accessory structure. He is, appears he is asked for a five-foot setback, but I believe, I don't know if he's going to need a variance for that, maybe John, if, I don't know, you made it a little differently, but 395.68 says that any building over 100 feet square, he cannot be placed closer to the side of rear property less than five feet?
Yeah, we, we kind of indicated that.
Oh, okay, so although I think the applicant had made a request for a rear yard variance of 15, that looks like it's established by our ordinance. The applicant has to show, demonstrate to this board that relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the existing zoning ordinance. He has to show that because of the size of the ground, there's an undue hardship. The undue hardship can only refer to the physical peculiarities or characteristics of a lot. An undue hardship would not conclude a financial enhancement of the property, would not conclude a preference to add a larger building, they're not, those are not hardships. The only hardships that a board can, can look at in passing a bulk variance under the statute is that the configuration of the ground almost mandates the, or would prohibit the use, and almost mandates the granting of such a variance. So when you're listening to the testimony, we have to be guided by what the statute sets forth, and what, what powers they give you to grant such a variance.
Thank you. Evening, Madam Chairwoman. There's a board, for record, the ladies, David Thatcher, who's a law firm, Thatcher Testimony, Thatcher. I'm the applicant, Joseph Uineko. Mr. Uineko is here, present tonight, to my left. Just for matter of record-keeping, prior to tonight's meeting, I presented to the board secretary our proofs of publication in the newspaper, as well as our proofs of service of the adjacent property owners. So all that should be on file with the board, and that was done in accordance with the statute requirements and the local ordinance. This is the application of Mr. Uineko, with respect to property located at 900 Central Avenue. This property is located at the corner of Central Avenue and 9th Avenue. It's designated on the tax map as block 105, block 17. The property is owned residential, and as indicated by this solicitor, this is a request to approve the construction of a B-Tax garage, which would be, as proposed, as the body applicant would be 24 feet, and width by 40 feet in length. This solicitor has also summarized the variances that are requested. One thing I would clarify that was stated by the solicitor, he indicated that the proposed structure would have a second floor, which is not the case. The height, and that was, the solicitor's comment was based upon the fact that the height of the building is going to be 18 feet, but that's not for the construction of the second floor, and there's a testimony from Mr. Uineko with respect to that. Mr. Uineko, before we start talking about the garage itself, I want to talk about the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. What is immediately behind your house? Can you move closer?
I want to say Comfort Inn, I think it's now the care field, or...
It's actually Travelodge.
Travelodge, I'm sorry.
And across from the Travelodge is what?
It's named Beauty, East Coast Beauty Supply.
And that's all part of the Runway Industrial Complex, is that right?
Yes.
Your property butts upright against that?
Yes, it does.
And what is immediately behind your property?
Woods, sort of creek, look the right way, back on me, lots of trees.
And immediately across from the Travelodge, what is there?
It's a huge warehouse, I think it's East Coast...
Duty Supplies over this?
Yes.
If I may...
Are you going to identify, did you mark them?
Yeah. So, Mr. Uineko, let me show you some more of this. Market is Y.
Yes, that's Y.
That's Y, can you identify this?
That's right. This is the, to the left is the fence in my backyard, that's the right, the woods behind it. That's my neighbor's shed.
And that's just a creek as well?
Yes, to the right.
There's forest. And then, sure, the market identification is Y, too. What's this picture of?
This is the motel immediately behind my lot.
Does the board prefer a look down, collectively, or one by one? Can you down my laundry, please?
It's a closer-up picture of the hotel.
And this is looking, this is from a burger property?
Yes, it is.
So this is, did I, did I get my paper here?
I'd say 150. I'd say one hundred and fifty.
For the record, Y four?
The Travelodge, it's all signed.
That's the sign, that's.
That's the road.
Uh, being behind, right? Identify Y five, please?
The East Coast Beauty Supply.
So this is looking catty corner to the rear of your property, from the corner of your property, correct?
Correct.
Y six?
The back portion of the warehouse, catty corner to my property.
Of East Coast Beauty Supply, correct?
Correct.
Can we see there a dumpster, correct?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Was just getting packed. Oh, they're not packed.
Yeah, they're not packed, because I called it.
Oh, sorry.
All right, now, Mr. Uneko, we talked about what's behind it, now let's talk about, uh, what's in front of your property facing from your front door. Um, how far away are you from the left of the bike? Blocks, blocks.
One block.
One block, okay. And within that one block, what is, uh, what, what facilities are there?
To the left is the CBS. To the right is one home, a rental property, a auto body shop, and on the corner of left horse pipe is sweats, information.
And that's a, uh, commercial facility as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The, uh, old body shop, how many, uh, um, properties is that up from your house?
Two.
You have the, uh, there's a single family that's all directly across the street and then the. Is there a rental property in between as well?
The rental property, I believe, is part of the body shop.
Okay. All right, let me show you with the market identification as Y seven, can you identify that?
There's a CBS.
A photo of the CBS building? And you, as you look out the front door, you can see that, is that correct?
That's where you see it, one of the.
Does that property come all the way down to the, uh, corner of Central Avenue?
Yes.
You identify, uh, Y eight for the board, please?
That's the rental unit.
A part of the same, uh, property that is also the old body?
Yes.
Y nine, please, sir?
The garage, the old body.
Okay, and what's that old body called? My dad's old body? Uh, I'm not sure if it has a name right now, but it used to be one of them. You identify Y ten, please?
Sweats.
They're not listed, sir.
Without listing.
They're the bodies, not listed. It's just rear.
Is it?
Yes.
I'm saying, correct?
That's the old body, yes.
That's correct.
Y ten is a, uh, picture of the sweat building?
Yes.
And so is Y eleven, correct?
Yes.
And all those buildings are within a block of your property, is that correct?
Yes.
So the CBS, the sweats building and the old body are all commercial facilities, correct?
Yes.
All right, this property, uh, you own, you, you own it, correct, nine hundred?
Yes.
And who lives there?
My wife, myself, and my two children.
You identify this as your personal residence?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to construct this detached garage, right?
Yes.
For what purpose?
To store and work on my vehicles.
And, uh, what kind of vehicles are we talking about?
Seven nine Firebird, seventy-eight Dodson, eighty-seven Jeep.
And, uh, what, what kind of, I mean, are these, uh, classic vehicles, how do you characterize them?
I consider them classic, the Firebird and Dodson, my wife and I, she bought the Firebird, you, I have the Dodson, and the Jeep, I just need Jeep for the little ones.
Uh, for insurance purposes, insurance purposes, how could they be insured?
They would be under, uh, they, because they call it classic, if I can drive them.
Okay. And, uh, is this, why do you do this? Why do you have these cars? What's, what's the, uh?
My license.
Okay. Personal hobby of yours?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You have those vehicles on your property, right, yeah, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, where do you keep them on the property?
One is in a carport, the other two are covered up with carpets.
All right, so they're just kind of out in the open at this point in time?
They are, not like, uh.
Two of them are anyway, correct?
Yes.
Uh, even though they're covered, they're still somewhat exposed to the weather?
Yes.
And you said another is, uh, enclosed or underneath a carport, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if this application is granted by the store, uh, you're going to store those vehicles within the garage, is that correct?
Yes.
So they would be out of sight?
Out of sight.
All right, the carport, uh, is there just one existing carport over there?
No, there are two.
Okay, now, if this application is granted, what would you propose to do with, uh, those carports?
Maybe we start renting.
Okay. There was something mentioned by the solicitor with respect to a second floor over the detached garage, are you proposing a second floor in this property?
No.
Why are you requesting the height eighteen feet then?
Such that the lift can raise the car to be able to work underneath it.
Okay, um, is that also, is that, is that just a work one, so it's not a work one, or is that also for storage purposes?
Well, it would be both.
Okay. And, uh, you need that height then of eighteen feet in order to install the lift and raise the vehicle?
Yes.
There's no proposed second floor, correct?
No second floor.
Not going to any dwelling quarters in the, uh, detached garage, correct, in the middle dwelling, all. All right, one of the concerns the board may be, may have is that you may fix cars for, uh, for portion reasons, for, for income. Now, is there any intent of doing that?
I have no intention or involvement.
All right, and would you be willing to attach that as condition that it will never operate a business out of there, part of your business?
I definitely would.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Uneko, property maintenance officer, share some, uh, as well, correct?
Yes.
And there is currently a property making its violation, and you have received from this property, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, one of the, uh, is one of the purposes with respect to this detached garage, I hope you clean up your yard with respect to that?
Absolutely, yes.
That will allow you to have a neater, cleaner yard, is that right?
Yes.
Less, less, uh, items in the yard itself?
Yes.
Okay. You said that you will only work on your vehicles, no one else is, correct?
Correct.
All right. Let's talk about the garage itself. Um, you're asking that this board grants you approval of forty-foot by twenty-four-foot in dimension, uh, garage, correct?
Yes.
Why are you asking for, you, you, you're referring to that, that's a pretty large structure, right?
It absolutely is.
Why are you requesting that as well?
If I went smaller to thirty-two, it would work, but this, the vector eight feet would give you room to work around the workbench and she moved the engines and transmissions around rather than be cranked. And I also will put patio furniture into one corner in the front, so it's not out in the weather.
So in addition to storage, uh, storage, you're working on your classical old vehicles, it's also going to allow you to store your personal property, correct?
Oh, yes, the snow's over, we go in there, it's just covered up.
So things that may be out in the open or exposed to the weather now, uh, that are, just in the yard, you'll be able to store them in this facility, correct?
Yes.
All right. Um, let's talk about the, uh, material that the building's going to be, what, what, uh, what is it going to be constructed up?
The proposal I made with Chris Uneko was it was going to be six by six posts on eight-foot centers with a concrete base under each post. And I have the schematics of the depth we discussed and the diameter.
If you get more into the structural construction on that.
Just want to add, two eight-foot garage doors facing Ninth Avenue, a thirty-six-inch area-sized entry door on the side facing my house, and a painted metal siding.
Okay, so the exterior is going to be made of metal?
Correct.
All right, um, before we get to the exterior's, uh, material, I'll show you, uh, what's the market identification is Y seventeen, can you identify that for the board?
That's the side of the garage facing my house.
Okay, so in the middle, we see, uh, a garage door, is that right?
Yes.
That would be facing your house and then, um, a thirty-six-inch, uh, personal access door as well, correct?
Yes.
All right, and then can you identify Y eighteen?
This is the side of the garage facing Ninth Avenue with two garage doors.
Okay, and that would be the side facing, uh, Ninth Avenue, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, you said the exterior is going to be metal, correct?
Yes.
All right, and I'll show you what's identified as Y twelve, Y twelve, yeah, we're, we're trying to jump out a little there. Uh, Y twelve, which is a photograph of a garage, correct?
Yes, that's what I proposed it to look like when finished.
Okay, um, as far as the color is concerned, this appears to be beige in color?
Mine's going to be a little lighter.
Okay.
Off-white.
So it's still going to be off-white beige, uh, but what we see here is what, uh, ultimately what the board can expect to be constructed on your property?
Yes.
Now, uh, your, your yard, um, how does your yard slope?
From the left to the rear, or the creek.
Okay, so it goes down?
Yes.
And that's because there's a creek directly behind you?
Yes.
All right, and in fact, the contours of your property are shown from the survey that was submitted as part of your application, correct?
Yes.
And in the, uh, location of Ninth and Central Avenue, uh, the, uh, the contour is actually identified, isn't it? Can you read that? It appears to be one hundred, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as we move to the rear of your property and back to the metal shed, uh, we see another slope, which is, can you read that over there?
Ninety-one.
All right, so your, your yard, uh, drops approximately ten feet in depth, correct?
Yes.
All right, and so you're proposing to locate this garage towards the back, correct?
Yes.
All right, and is that because, uh, because of the slope, this is the best location for that?
Yes, many people.
God.
Many people have said that to the surveyor, to the concrete estimator.
The slop, will the slope assist at all with respect to the aesthetics of the size of garage?
It will make it hardly seen from the front.
Why is that?
Well, the way it slopes down.
Okay.
And tucks it in there.
And, um, how are you proposing to access this garage from the street?
I, my preference is a curb cut on Ninth Avenue.
Okay, and if the board is not in agreement with the curb cut leading directly out to Ninth Avenue, do you have an alternative proposal?
The alternative is to extend the current driveway.
And that access is from, uh, Central Avenue?
Correct.
Okay, and you would run the driveway from the existing, uh, end of the driveway all the way back to the garage?
Yes.
And what are, what material are you proposing that their driveway be constructed on?
I was going to do concrete, but for permeability, I was told large rock would be better, but whatever the board proposes.
That's what I was going to ask you, if this board recommends that it be, uh, a gravel driveway as opposed to a concrete driveway, you'd be in agreement with that?
Absolutely.
And if they, uh, propose vice versa, you'd also be in agreement with that?
It doesn't really matter because the garage is going to be more stored than going in and out of.
Okay. Um, are you aware of any other similar garages that have been, uh, constructed in town?
Yes.
You identify one, four?
Third Avenue, I believe, oh, I forget the exact address.
And, uh, do you know what the, uh, what was constructed there?
It was a, you know, very nice garage, similar to the one I proposed, it is twenty-four by thirty-two, twelve-foot walls.
I'm going to show you a, a group of photos here, which is Y thirteen, Y fourteen, Y fifteen, and Y sixteen. Uh, just to kind of speed this up a little bit, are these all photographs of the, uh, of the, uh, Third Avenue garage that you're referring to?
Yes.
See, that's just one property on Third Avenue?
One property on Third Avenue, just five photos of the same property. Sorry, not, uh, we'll get you next time. All right, and then, um, I have to submit to the board here, uh, a copy of a resolution from this board, um, dated January eleventh, two thousand and twelve, um, with respect, which is the, uh, resolution of approval for the garage that, um, we suggested for. But then, I don't think we need to test it for that, right, that you?
No. It looks like, yeah, it, the, uh, this was approved in December of two thousand and eleven, memorialized in January of two thousand and twelve, and permission, variances were granted to this applicant over on Third Avenue, thirty-four, West Third Avenue, to construct a third, a twenty-four by thirty-two-foot garage with an eighteen height, um, at eighteen height and, uh, similar to, uh, for, to, to store classic cars, uh, conditioned that there would be no machinery op, operated inside the structure. And, uh, the applicant testified that he was dedicated more to a hobby of clay, uh, restoring, uh, and storing plastic old vehicles. Okay, the board wants to prove that they have, it was based, uh, it was based by. What are you testing on?
That's all right.
The board wants to see.
All right, Mr. Uneko, uh, you talked about that one property, um... by the way, where is that relationship to Blackwell's place? Where is that property where, with the garage that was approved?
It's approximately a block from the place.
Okay. Going back to Y twelve, which was a photograph of the type of, uh, garage that you proposed to build, what does it look like? A fair representation of what your barn would look like, your garage would look like. Um, is this, is this photograph of a garage from the town?
Yes.
Where is it?
Um, our shop.
Okay, is it a residential property?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I took a photograph of it because I thought it was better than taking one off the internet, which is all mine off of people's buildings.
Okay. But that is in fact, uh, what, is a fair representation of what your building would look like?
Just about exact, mine will run up and down, and I like that look better than sideways, like the other guy make his.
Okay, um, and you've seen the, uh, report of the engineer, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, there was several, several comments, uh, that he, uh, had in there, uh, one of those who, provided necessary information with regards to the zoning, uh, the missing zoning information, you're willing to provide that, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, uh, he also recommends as a condition of approval that the attorney claims of satisfaction, um, he says borough zoning officer, but I think he means property maintenance officer. You're willing to do that, correct?
Yes.
In fact, you've already, you've been in communication with, uh, Officer Knight, uh, since the violation, knows violation was received, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the other comments you've already addressed, I believe, so that's, that's the extent of our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher, thank you, Mr. Uneco. Is that it? Let the board hear your comments, please. You're, you're, and you went through everything you did.
We had four comments, one was to identify the zoning information, which they protested. Second was with the excessive amounts of debris, which they didn't give the, he won't. Uh, third was to question the driveway, I assume you're going to have to say, you're looking at a single driveway out on the ninth and in the, because I think you testified that there'd be two garage doors?
Correct. I wanted a single to lie, the concrete guy told me it would have to be a double. He told me that twenty-two feet wasn't enough distance to flare. If he's wrong, I hope you're right. He told me it would have to be the full width because of only twenty.
Why wouldn't you push the garage back into the lot further?
The way it drops. I would have liked it back further because of the way the contour goes down, it comes from both sides, it would really be.
You're gonna have to deal with, with the borough to get a run of the permit for the driveway?
Oh, I understand that.
You've been ultimately wanting to address it at that point, um, and then we asked about, if any, if any exterior finished with the garage. I would note for the board that, that the proposed sizes of the, uh, garage, twenty-four by forty, the house, the existing house is twenty-five by forty-five. So it's almost the size of the existing line that's out there today.
John, do you know, is this approaching any wetlands at all because of the stream that goes along the back of this property?
There is no information submitted, um, whether, you know, on the wetlands, uh, we can make that a condition of approval that, uh, information is submitted, we can check to the GeoWeb. I hear there's the, the GeoWeb, as soon as any.
Can you check that, Mr. Thatcher?
Did I check it now? I mean, I would be, I would check the Geo, Geo website and confirm that, did it, did it require, did it satisfy, did it still ever interpretation? Whether that is wetland presence, absence, determination from the P, um, technically what, what we do is we'll, we'll look at the GeoWeb, that shows wetlands within the area, and then we can ask for that, that secondary step. Usually if there's nothing on the GeoWeb, you're okay, it's still up to the applicant though, if he violates wetlands, it's on him. This board has really no jurisdiction with respect to wetlands, it's determined by the P, all the permits are issued by the P. But we can ask for the initial step if the, if the board weren't, wanted to make the condition, if there were wetlands that showed up on Geo, on the GeoWeb, that they get a presence, absence determination for, for the footprint where they're going to be.
And also, um, I don't know whether you're aware of this, but it's not been the purview of this board to grant a curb cut, and I'd have to go before mayor and council, and there's also, I have comments from Chief Dianno, um, and he is writing, I can read it verbatim, the plan to indicate where the entrance to the garage will be located and will immediately be installed. He's concerned about, um, the heavy traffic on Ninth Avenue and vehicles backing out onto Ninth Avenue to, to load up trucks, so he is concerned that that may pose a safety problem within the borough.
Well, as we indicated, uh, Mr. Uneco was willing to, uh, go with whichever, uh, idea that the board proves as far as access to the garage, whether it's also Ninth Avenue from the existing driveway, and then Central, I'm sorry, Central Avenue, I'm, streets, streets around here. This, this board wants off, access off of Central, extending existing driveway, uh, then we can pop that. Another report for us.
I have a question, are there trees in that area that you need to clear?
No, I'll, I take that back. I don't need to clear it, I have one oak tree. It's fairly small, and I'm gonna have to say goodbye to it.
Are there any amendments to the surface itself that you're gonna have to alter in any way in order for the building to sit level ground?
It's approximately, I think it's twelve inches is gonna have to be shifted from the front left corner to the back right. It's minor, very minor change.
And is that the concrete piece?
Eventually, yes.
Eventually.
Well, yes, eventually.
The survey that they referred to when we were giving pres- presentation about this nine foot drop across the lot, if you look at the contour of the corner closest to the intersection in Central, and when you compare it to the far corner, there's a two and a half foot drop. So where, I don't know where you're getting the twelve inch dimension from.
Well, I didn't remember the amount, I just remember him saying it was minimal, what had to be shifted to level.
Looks to me, John, in the quarter of the proposed garage, it's ninety-five feet?
Well, that's ninety-five concrete. And if you look at the far corner, that's between the ninety-three and the ninety-two concrete. So that's two and a half feet, you know, within the, the.
So it'd be half of that, right?
Not be two and a half feet.
I think what he was, uh, saying was that, and then have to take, take all this down there and put all this together.
Because you'll try to a hole.
Yeah, and then cut, cut, okay. Yeah, cut, cut. That's the word.
Thatcher, good point.
Do you have a, uh, John, do you, do, uh, the ground being considered pervious equal? Or why is taken that back? I seem to remember somebody.
Well, I, when, when you put ground, we usually have vehicles running over, it becomes hard pack, it becomes, it becomes impervious. If there's a concern about drainage, I don't know what the groundwater conditions are out here. You probably recommend seepage pits be installed for the roof of the new structure rather than worrying about a gravel driveway, which is a maintenance problem. You just pave the driveway, you can take care of the roof around it, it's clean water at that point. Again, that depends on where, where seasonal groundwater is, will it warrant for that to be completed? To, you know, justify that, that would actually cause. You know, the good news is that there's, you know, downstream, this is just wooded area, so it's not like there's a home that people are enjoying a lot, that, you know, you guys can purchase surface, you can create, proper water problem.
What a question, are there any other driveways on Ninth Avenue where people have to back out?
Uh, well, the other, well, um.
The only driveways are up the street, which is the other one.
You have to back out there?
No, that's not it.
There's a four-way section there, no?
Excuse me, that's just.
Do you recall some concern about, um, that he did not get a curb cut on Ninth Avenue, how would he leave the car? That, that the garages are facing Ninth Avenue?
Yeah, how are you gonna, how are you gonna accomplish getting, turning the bars in the garage, maybe not turning inside the garage?
Well, if, if it's too tight of a turn, I did not attempt it, but if the twenty-two feet back is not enough to turn in, then I would consider putting the doors on the, up, switching the two sides, the garage doors on the house side and the entry door on the Ninth Avenue side, and I'm hoping for the curb cut.
I think, I think one way, when, one way around, or one way to deal with cars backing into Ninth, you just have a, a turn.
How, how's it gonna turn?
You turn the garage and then you have part of the driveway go towards Central, so you can back out, turn with the cake coming down.
Have we traditionally said that Ninth Avenue is dedicated to the borough and is not under the Richard's group, or so, et cetera?
I believe that that is to be dedicated.
Is it is dedicated, do we do anything to that?
I believe, I believe that's our responsibility.
I think maybe. I think we ought to get an interpretation on that first, then.
I guess, Mr. Knight, you're here, you're very good with the property, could you perhaps enlighten the board on the interest property for us, please?
Certainly, uh, my primary concerns are with the exterior of the property. Uh, Mr. Uneco has not been in compliance with the Borough Property Maintenance Code since September twenty-fourth of two thousand and seven, when I originally cited him. Uh, the exterior of his property contains what arguably can be described as debris or storage. Uh, he's indicated, from what I understand here, that the primary purpose of this garage is to store motor vehicles and to repair same vehicles for antique purposes. A large majority of the storage or debris that is in, uh, Mr. Uneco's yard doesn't appear to be auto-related. So my concern is, uh, we have to ask him, is, is the salvaging or scrapping of the material in there being used to supplement an income or being operated as a business, and is that the purpose of the garage? Uh, the timeframe that I've laid out with him, because he's been in, in court numerous times, is to hopefully construct this garage, to put some of the storage in here, into the garage. But he's given me testimony now that, that the primary purpose is for the vehicles.
Right. Yeah, that's where we kind of have a contradiction, um, we were told by Mr. Knight that he gave you an attachment on the debris in your backyard, which I did go over and look at on Saturday, um, until you either got approval or, or not from this board. And it sounds like you're not intending to, do you have light runs for carbon garage?
It's probably a transitional phase. I originally wanted to build this garage in four, but with my wife's injury, he turned the situation around, put the garage building because of half the income on hold. So right now it's a transition phase of trying to balance my life between building the garage, which I'm kind of happy I've, uh, pushed into doing it. So it's like, that's what its main purpose is to be, is to store the cars. On the interim, I mean, you were over there Saturday, there's been great improvement, uh, steadily progress. I mean, it was, I will say, it was totally out of hand, as Mr. Knight indicated, but it has been steady progress. And I think this will enable me to do more work faster rather than working out in the elements all the time, trying to do anything.
And why is it that you can't accomplish that in a sixteen by twenty-four garage?
It would not store them, and I couldn't work in it.
And how many of those cars are registered, do you believe, right now?
All of them.
I, I visited the site today, and I, I said I could not be in access on the front driveway, so I had to beat through fences on the side. And my observation, there wasn't an eight foot square area inside of there, there was a stacked four foot aisle with something or other, I don't know what it is.
So some of the stuff that's back there, is that materials that you purchased for the, for the purpose of building this garage?
Some of the materials are for building the garage, there are sort of showering units there. Uh, yes, I'm looking through the fence, I can see how you saw it, because it is mostly on the perimeter. On the two parameters, the back and the Ninth Avenue side.
So, so if, just, just to clarify, if, if the, this board approved your, your request to build this garage, a lot of the materials are gonna go either construct the building or insides it, correct?
Yes.
Then you are willing to make a condition of the approval that the backyard will be cleaned up?
Yes.
For this process?
Condition of.
Anyone else? What was the original non-problem, did he?
September twenty-fourth of two thousand and seven, when he was originally cited.
And there haven't been any improvements since?
He's made, uh, somewhat improvements over the course, uh, just to give you the history of it. When I originally cited him, the complaint was never fully abated because subsequent re-inspections, although we revealed that there was some progress on his part. Unfortunately, sometimes, let's say, that the, the areas that were vacated were again replenished with the storage and debris, which resulted in Mr. Uneco coming back to court.
What is this, this debris, is this metal, or just?
It's, it's all sorts of that, part, you want to, let your. When I pass that around, here's the file of the photographs from the specific states.
And John, what's a video review?
The last reinspection I performed, I believe, in June one, two thousand and twelve, the photographs attached to that. There's a descriptive narrative or my, uh, reinspection.
Any members waiting for, can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Uh, do you, excuse me, sir, do you intend to build a garage yourself?
My cousins didn't help me. I would never do it myself.
It seems like you have a lot of projects.
Well, as I said, I got pushed into this because working with Taylor Macy's, my hours didn't allow a part-time job. Now luckily, things have calmed down in some ways where some of my relatives have realized they can help me out in building this thing, and in the long run, I will be hopefully better off. Because I don't like my yard like that, I don't think anyone would.
Can you include the dates of those photos that, that come from the town?
There's, there's very high, the whole files are from September.
Or I believe.
Something's evolved over the six-year period, there's no improvement.
Well, there is improvement.
I mean.
There's no improvement since what you first put your first application in versus this application, there's been no improvement. None whatsoever.
Have you removed things?
And you're, that's why the board has objected, so because we didn't have tough information.
I, I have, I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't there when you came over, because I would admit, the driveway is blocked with each vehicle.
It's been shrouded in, in plywood with rocks on the, put in the plywood, so it don't flow by.
I don't believe there's rocks, but there is plywood on top of it.
There's stone, there's stone or something, the whole. I probably wouldn't have stopped, Mr. Uneco, if you were there, because that might have prompted a conversation which was unfair to the application.
I did drive by, but I didn't look over your fence, does it look similar to these pictures right now, or is it much?
I have not revisited due to the fact that this, the last reinspection in court, where we were discussing this in court, was in June. There's been continuances on the court charges due to the fact to give Mr. Uneco time to make application, here to see what direction he was going with to abate these issues.
Because a lot of it looks more than just cars.
This photo is vacated, by the way, I asked Mr. Knight, what was the most recent photo there, and I think he indicated last, the last photo is taken from June.
June two thousand and twelve.
So that's a good seven months ago. I can have him testify that he's removed things since then to the present.
I have.
And you were in court, you were on, you were in this court, what, three months ago? September, I believe, was it? And have you removed additional items since then to the present?
I have. I mean, it will have to be removed in order for me to be sure.
Or where we put it, not to face ninety-five percent of your yard. Stacked four-foot, five-foot aisle.
Mr. Reed, any questions, Reeders?
Yes, sir. Just another section is continuing?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Has Mr. Yuneko had any minds in that?
Not until there's a trial, either he will enter a guilty plea or not guilty plea. I've allowed a postponement until such time, a decision by this board, to see what they get.
It's making that a bully man who, who didn't want to be there, be careful of it.
Well, it's been since two thousand and seven, which is certainly adequate time. Again, my concern is the disposition of his exterior property to get this material removed and get his yard into compliance with Borough Codes.
Which unfortunately doesn't meet the criteria for hardship, the statute of hardship. And I understand what you're trying to do in some ways, but like Mr. Rowan said, we have to go by the statute. Does anybody need Mr. Rowan to read that again? Everybody clear on that?
Say it again.
Everybody clear on the statute of hardship, what constitutes hardship? Any criteria for it?
The board can also consider that there's, that the board has approved a similar structure in treating an application more favorably also. However, that, I don't know, we have a resolution that was a smaller building that was twenty-four by thirty-two. I don't know what the circumstances were there, but they did, they did, the board did grant that. Although I believe there's exceptions, that no machinery was allowed in there, in that particular unit.
But also in that, but in that unit that was approved, one of the, the testimony from the applicant was that he wanted the store to be able to...
Yeah, I saw that, and that was part of the, was part of the...
So the benefit to this applicant's testimony?
I have a question. Can we take consideration of this property?
Yes, you can. You can make a condition that he is in full compliance with the municipal maintenance code. The building permit will be issued. That could be a condition. You can, you can just put as many conditions as you want on approval. Okay? It's not just limited to one. It would be at least conditioned upon, I believe the applicant testified, he complied with all the items in John's review letter dated February eighth. You can make the condition upon, and confirm that there's no wetland effect on the property. You can make the condition upon being in full compliance, and that all violations, maintenance code violations are satisfied.
And in fact, we would agree to put the timeline on that, to the cleanup, as well as the construction. I understand that this board doesn't want to open-ended approval that, you know, the building takes five years to build. I understand based on the history with the proper maintenance violation. We can put timelines on it today that will, obviously, if it's not accomplished, then the approval expires. And then obviously as well, I mean, the proper maintenance issue is a separate issue that Mr. Yuneko has to deal with, Mr. Knight, of course. We're willing to put timelines on that cleanup, as well as the construction.
And be regarded as a little larger than what we formally approved.
What would be the timeline of this, you'd be interested in? How long would it take to clean it up and build the floor?
I haven't talked to the applicant about that. Do you have any idea?
And then what would you do if he didn't finish it? That's a concern. It's not like we have a performance bond here. If he starts...
Well, I didn't say that if it wasn't completed, then the... Would less, would be fine, if you're down.
If he starts the building, and five years from now, the building's not done.
Can we precondition, can we make a precondition that the yard be cleaned up?
Absolutely.
Friday afternoon, instead of satisfaction of the construction code department?
Absolutely.
To meet the code before you fly through the building?
Absolutely.
Yes, your question. So Yuneko, when you were here before, that acted in the fall, you had the same size of building?
Yes.
Did you look into seeing if you could reduce the size? Because I thought it was the board's opinion at the time, that they thought that the building was excessive in size. Did you look to see, you know, the way you, how many cars you have in that building? You know, you can reduce it?
I could go through the thirty-two feet. I actually had a tour of his other elements. He invited me inside to see it, and thirty-two would work. But forty would be more workable.
Go ahead.
Be strictly...
Are you going to be working on all three cars at the same time?
Pardon me.
Are you going to be working on all three cars at the same time?
I would concentrate on one at a time, but if they're all in out of the weather, you could, if you're in the middle of one gutter, you could do two things, two at once. I would, you know, like, one area, little four spots. Car, 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 work area in the front. I wouldn't want to box them all in, so it would be hard to work around.
Your preference is for it to be forty feet in length, correct?
I do prefer forty.
If the board's not inclined to grant the same building, you're willing to reduce it to thirty-two feet, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Which is consistent with what this board approved a little over a year ago, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Yuneko, when was the last time you worked on any of these cars?
With the cleanup, I haven't had time. I mean, I've been focusing more on the cleanup.
How long would you say it's been since you've actually done work on any of these cars?
Oh, I've changed my oil, put brakes on.
How long ago was that?
Oh, I changed my oil, November, right before Thanksgiving.
I think she's asking the cars that are covered.
The cars that are covered, that you're intending to work on? When was the last time you actually did work on any of those cars?
Oh, it's probably been six years. I don't have a place to work on them.
Did you know that, just out of curiosity, before you got the course?
I always planned on building a garage, but I, you know, other things were there.
Who asked me that?
Mr. Rowan, assuming that the board would grant the approval, and Mr. Yuneko agreed to clean up the yard before he got a building permit, what kind of conditions did the board impose to make sure it doesn't become a, you know, more debris? You know, once he gets his building permit?
Or he goes into a piece, we could require a bond. Which is, if we go back out there, you have to, you'd be stuck again.
Because I was probably...
Yeah, you're stuck around there. And the other thing I think that we're going to consider, although, Mr. Yuneko said he's been trying to delay six years, that somebody brought up, you know, what if this project, to build the garage, takes six years? It might not be fair to the neighbors that have a hip-built garage.
I think he indicated him and his brother, or one of, is that what I'm doing, your cousin?
If, the garage will be built if I am granted permission.
My question is, if it is granted, how long does the building permit last? How long is it open for?
Three years.
There's an extension now.
There's an extension to three years.
And what happens if he doesn't complete within the three years?
I think three years is major.
I don't think you did three years on a wire.
Not positive, but I think that...
I think the construction issue, the rent issue...
That's the only, yeah, the only comment I think is good for that.
Put an extension on it.
I guess the question that I think a lot of us have is, we're looking at the pictures of how the yard looks now. And you understand the garage is to put three cars. So you take three cars and you put in the garage, but the yard is still a mess. How do we get the yard cleaned up before, you know, are you willing to throw all this stuff away? Or is this stuff sentimental?
It was not sentimental. It was not sentimental. It was accumulated during the timeframe when I had to recycle it for money. Luckily, as I said, I have received assistance now that I'm not going to have to.
So how are you going to get rid of it? How are you going to get rid of it in a timely fashion? Six years is not a time to change.
No, it's not. But if you were to slide it, well, you did see the pictures at the beginning. It was totally, I hate to use the word ridiculous, but Mr. Knight would probably use the word ridiculous, how it was at the beginning.
Quite diplomatically, yes.
Now, it is basically the back, the back wall, and the night avenue side. The center is now pretty much what the yard should be.
Is it like that now?
The pool is...
I've been out since June, because we continue since August.
I was out on Saturday, and I hate to say it, so it's pretty much in disarray. Park work, fallen over. Well, no, the one park work I dismanded, as I said I would.
My business is powerful. How big an area do you need to put your parts, et cetera? How big an area do you need to store this, these extra parts and whatever you need to move?
Well, it's not so much to store the parts. It's more, if I would take the fenders off, you could have the water...
What I'm trying to say to you is, like, what kind of room do you need in your yard for you to take all this, I don't want to call it debris, because to you it's...
Stuff. Material.
How, how much room do you need to take this stuff and put it in one spot? What I'm saying is, could you buy a shed to throw it in?
I'd love a pot. I'd love to put in one of those storage boxes.
A pot? Here we go, one cup from that.
There's an area you can...
Yeah, I would say a pot is supposed to buy a shed, because the shed you've got forever. But I guess you rent it, so, pending completion of the garage before you do that.
Well, what we're saying is, at the end, when it's all built, it'll be three cars parked inside. The yard will be cleaned up.
Yes.
And there's nothing going to be, all this stuff is going to either go away or be inside the yard.
Yes.
Mr. Yuneko, I wanted to understand that the accumulated stuff back, back from the fact... You were planning to sell a salvage?
I did sell a lot of the stuff. That was the original intent. And that is all gone now. It's been gone, wow, nine years.
It's all gone.
No, it's not all gone. It's ninety, I said ninety percent gone.
Sell the stuff.
But not even...
How do you have to disagree with that?
That's what I did do.
Either that, or what I was proposing doesn't make sense. If you're going to, if you're going to rent something to put in it, that you're going to junk.
Well, that's why I want to build a garage and put the cars in it. It'll open up the driveway, because it's difficult getting through it.
I understand where you're coming from, but I believe the board members want the yard cleaned up before you start. And I'm just trying to find out if there's an avenue that you can seek. But being now that you've described the stuff, the salvage, or whatever it is you're selling, then why don't you just call the guy up and say, come and get this, what's it worth? And it goes away, and clean up the rest of the yard.
He also testified that some of the building materials were used in the building.
Well, then you would have to take that portion.
We're actually the same nation.
Okay.
Mr. Knight, you have something?
Yes, I just want to add, certainly, I would be in favor of a large garage, because it would eliminate the situation. But the question that I have, and maybe it's just my interpretation, some of the testimony, it's a bit hazy here, and I would direct it to Mr. Yuneko. Are you going to continue in the salvage business?
No.
So then the purpose of the garage will not be to store salvage? And the reason I'm asking that is because of the history of him clearing the area, vacating portions of it, and as I mentioned before, replenishing it. So then, as he indicated, if he's not going to utilize the garage for a secondary purpose, then the material that is not affiliated with the auto restoration should be removed. As Mr. Reeders indicated, quite frankly, he needs to call somebody in and get it all out. It's that simple.
Or we can deem that as operating a business.
Correct. I was going to say the same thing.
Well, while Mr. Yuneko at times has shown progress, it, shall we say, has not reached the expediency that I was seeing.
There's occasional absence.
And it represses.
Exactly. It's, you know, sometimes it's two steps forward by several factors. So, you know, my only suggestion here is that if it results in a contractor coming in there, someone coming in, scrapping it, the materials Mr. Patrick indicated, something was related to the construction of the building. But as the photographs indicate, a lot of it is not related to the building. It is not related to the vehicle restoration. And those are the materials that have to be, quite frankly, vacated as soon as possible. This story has evolved from two thousand and seven or to twenty thirteen, and like all books, they have an ending, and it has to come, you know, from my standpoint.
If there happened to be an emergency situation on that property, where the firemen had to gain access to the rear of the building, I don't think they'd be able to do it.
No, there's a life safety issue there, which is impacting upon firefighters, EMS, and police. And certainly due to the condition of the yard, if you get a smoke-filled condition obscuring... Obscuring what he has in the yard.
You can't put something out that's underground, if there's ten things above it.
It's...
Well, like you said, this building will permit him to place these vehicles that are undercover, whether it's a harp or a carport, are going to be housed inside the building. It's going to open up the driveway. And it's going to eliminate these life safety issues. It's going to eliminate the storage issues in the backyard. He's agreed to make a condition approval to remove whatever scrap remains there. He's agreed to get a pot to store the building materials in there until completion of the building. So he's willing to do what this board has asked to rectify this problem, both from a proper maintenance standpoint, as well as the board's insistence.
Do you agree after squirting scrap in that garage? In other words, he gets rid of the cars, he sells the cars, and now the scraps in the garage? And he's selling the scrap? Will he make that a condition?
You can't keep me in the scrap release.
Right. Well, it could be a condition that you can only use it for the storage and make storage oil.
At a worst-case scenario, Mr. Yuneko, you're going to put it in a standard garage. If you don't get this approval, we can put you in a two-car garage that is sixteen-by-twenty-four.
No, my assessment was, if the board's not ready to, it's forty-by-twenty-four. Or if he asks for thirty-two-by-twenty-four, which is consistent with what...
Now, I'm asking if that is not, every application changes on its own. I'm asking you if that is denied, are you going to put up a sixteen-by-twenty-four garage? If that's on compliance?
I need some garage.
Right, so you're putting up sixteen-by-twenty-four?
It's not my preference.
I understand that. I was asking you, you're doing that, so you put two, oh, with two cars in that garage? I'm sorry?
If I put a small garage up, I'd move it to the house.
You would?
I'm sorry?
And if I had a larger garage, it would be northbound to the house and store the cars? Because I don't want to store the cars.
So you can store the two cars in that garage and get a pot, store it around it?
I think that would be financially accounted for, Dr. Reed.
Anybody else?
Don't seem less of a finding for hardship to a small structure, do you?
In the long run, no.
Because...
A two-car garage shouldn't work to work in and store. Anybody else? Anyone?
I have to ask this question. What you have in the yard now, you're not going to build the thing and then put it back inside of there?
No.
The all the scrap material there?
And it won't protect the cars. You know, I didn't hang on to my wife's original seventy-nine barber to see it rot away. I mean, it's protected under, it has that breathable cover, but it's not the same as being in a building.
There are three parts of this.
If the board grants the approval that they're taking around, and the condition is, you got to clean up the yard before you get a building permit, what are you going to do with all the material?
It has to be gone before I can start construction. What are you going to do with it?
Put it in the pot.
It's going to be stored. If it's stored, it's gone.
What are, what are you storing in the pot? Only the material that you'd be using for a garage?
Yes.
Or all the other stuff?
No, I would want to store stuff. I mean, the stuff's going away.
So why not just get rid of it rather than putting it in the pot?
I'm not going to quit.
The material is going into the pot, and I think he's going to get rid of the remaining stuff, right?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Knight?
Again, that's just a thing that I want to clarify again. Certainly, if they give you, approve the large garage, that would be fine. But my concern with the large size, if it is granted, Mr. Yunaco began, shall we say, not annexing the yard. Even, he's, he's going to get something, if it's approvable, to full capacity. So, that he has to understand that that's limitations of what he has to put in there. So, we don't have the problem growing outside of the garage again. That was my concern with the scrap. But again, he's indicating the primary use is for the vehicles. If he puts material in there, it'll be kept inside.
It seems, seems to me that we need to have some mechanism to guarantee the board he's got the building's done, the board he does it, and the board goes on selling. I would make the suggestion, after we approve or disapprove or talk about the size of it. First of all, if we look at this way, if, if we ask Mr. Yanac to clean up the garage, okay? Get a pod, put the materials. This could maybe save him money to put it in there. And then have him come back. Then we can talk about the size of the garage. Because if he lets us down at this point, then why can we go further with the garage?
I agree. We just give it a long, table it for a long time.
And, 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 and all due respect, Mr. Knight has to, uh...
How long do you think it'll take to clean your, your yard up?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Can I, can I tell you something? They probably take me till the end of March.
If it takes them six months, you can't come back? Six months? I would think that he wants...
We would just table you. Just if we, if, if we could table one more.
Well, the thing is, the table, is that the order now you don't approve, not the table? Or, or table it over another?
Mr. Kent?
Mr. Yunaco, you just said you could have it completed by the end of March?
Weather permitting. I mean, I, I don't know for sure, but make it conditional upon before I can build it. You know, if it's not cleaned up, I can't go.
May I ask you, how do you intend to accomplish it? With the outside contractor coming in? Because the amount of material in there. And, and again, the reflection here, but I've seen how you work with your Jeep pickup and moving in small increments.
Well, that's, yeah, that's about all I need.
It, it just, to me, doesn't seem realistic. And again, like I said, I'm continuous into the court issue here, but it's all woven together here.
Well, I should, I think we've heard you. What, are you going to move forward?
Yeah, he, he, yeah. No, I mean, whatever, whatever action, you know, you want to take, certainly, you're not going to hurt me, but I want to, well, Mr. Yunaco isn't here, or is here, to try and to get approval for this, to agree to conditions to, quite frankly, terminate these violations that, you know, with specific timeframe. Uh, to reduce the yard to, quite simply, the vehicles that he intends to store in the garage, the accessories and parts for the vehicles, and the building material to, to construct the building that he wants. All the other stuff has to go.
I have another question, Governor. Can we, if, if we bring an approval, can we have a date that our approval withdrawn?
Well, you could have, you could say that it's conditioned upon him being fully compliant and conditional on Mr. Knight's reinspection and his satisfaction. But once the building permit is issued, I don't know if we put a timeline on that.
No, but my question is, no, or is... We say, okay, it's got to be cleaned up by Memorial Day. If he doesn't have it cleaned by Memorial Day, then our approval...
Then your approval, uh, uh, lapses?
Yeah.
Sunset on our approval. You could, you could, you could make a condition like that. I think it would, that might be better. A better remedy might be, is what Mr. Beatrice proposed, maybe tabling it from a month or even sooner to see what progress is made. But it's up to the board. It's up to the board. You can condition and say, if it's not done, the, the condition, it laxes.
I'll speak in favor of precondition.
Well, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Beatrice that it has to get cleaned up first. Because I, I was thinking the whole time that we could make conditions and all that, but I get very nervous because it's not a commercial property where we can hold it to a performance bond and things like that. So, I think it does need to be cleaned up first. I think that the idea that this garage is going to magically make all this stuff go away is not going to happen. Uh, I'm inclined to allow, I think the garage would be great for his, his cars and things like that. It would be, looking at the property, backs up to just woods. Even a larger garage, maybe, if the board thought a bigger garage would be more helpful with the cars, uh, cars are inclined to that. But I, I, I'm staying about the conditions, but I, I have to agree. I don't think that we can put ourselves out until he's come forward first to get the property cleaned up.
And we can't make the police this long time. It's not fair. Scott, you've had the police in your yard for six years. And still in disarray right now. It's still in disarray. You have to, you have to create that.
As soon as you have it. You don't want to believe that you're going to do this. Uh, I think, I think the board must help you. I think, I think you're willing to do all this, but you have to turn your stuff into a credible asset. So, I think if we went this way, we would do, put the cars clean up.
I'm willing to table and, hey, to have to clean it up. Sadist of this law, he's going to follow through on what is specified to tonight. Um, in hopes that the board will approve the request for the destruction.
And Nate, you're waiting any automatic statutory approval, which Nate did, okay? So, we can put this on the agenda? Would you want it on the next agenda?
Let me do that for control purposes.
For control, okay.
And then I can, maybe I'll send a status letter from the, uh, the chairman, person.
I think we should also be in contact with, with Mr. Knight also. And I think every...
We step in every other Thursday.
I think when they decide to come back in from the board, Mr. Knight will have and put that, and report back to the board.
Before you guys step aside, I just wanted to see if anyone from the public would speak on this application, this application only? I see no one speaking, so...
I would put it on, Mr. Knight. You can put it on and if you need, well, you'll request the...
What's that mean? There's a motion on the floor that we table this application until the March thirteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting. Number second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thanks, sir. We're going to table that until the thirteenth of March. And Mr. Knight, if you can kindly clear your schedule. You mind in here, I mean?
March thirteenth?
Yes, sir. Do you have a few minutes? Or do you have to go?
Go ahead.
We're just going to go through the sign which you have to do at the end. We have an informal here.
Sure.
Mr. Clancy?
Thank you. Father recessed. I want to, Father, Knight, this after. Father recessed.
Call me Joe. Clancy, how are you, Mr. Knight?
Call me Joe. Go get my coffee. You want to go to the sign, stay on?
No, no, we're going to go to the same form.
Yeah, let me get that, and I'll be back.
Thank you. Clancy, how are you, Mr. Knight?
I guess we only have fifteen minutes, right?
Oh, my God, maybe fourteen.
Won't start it after you're out. I can't, I can't show you the room.
Hi. That's my good time. Please, no, not till the clock. Good evening. I'm finding that the Amy Parsons is on the council for the applicant.
The applicant, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy Parsons, council for the applicant. Uh, the applicant is here on the formal, and what the applicant is proposing is building an addition on the existing American compliance store on, the old American compliance store on Black Horse Pike. Um, it is a sports plant and a, a regalia retail store. Um, and, uh, the, the plans show the, uh, show the extension. Um, the current owner is, is Mr. Rowan. We have an option to purchase. We're assumed to be the contract purchaser on that piece. The portion behind the, um, store is owned by the VFW. And, um, the, uh, VFW, um, is actually supporting the application with the, with the public member gang. Um, the VFW has agreed to give us cross easements for parking and access because as we proposed the, um, the addition, it will require our traffic to go across a portion of the VFW property. The VFW has indicated they don't have a problem with that. We are going to, in exchange, give them a formal easement for access and parking for their social functions, which are at different times normally than the, uh, the traffic at the store. Um, so it's kind of a, a benefit to both of us. Mr. Rowan, the, the current owner of the property, has also previously given to the VFW a small piece of land, uh, for their, for their expansion. Uh, when they expanded the VFW, apparently they, when they put their approvals up, they weren't real careful as to where the property line was. And, uh, some of their approvals were actually on Mr. Rowan's land. Mr. Rowan, with the consent of my client, gave a pie-shaped piece of that property to the VFW so that they would clear it up. They actually have more room now, and they were able to put their trash enclosure on that, that pie-shaped piece. So, it made the VFW property more workable. Um, the, uh, the issue is, is that my client is pretty much out of storage. His, the good news is in this bad economy is my client's business is doing very well. Uh, as a result, he needs to expand the storage capacity, uh, of the, uh, of the building. The vast majority of the building as is used now is on its old force bases. It's all for, uh, display and sale. And that has left him cramped for, um, storage of, of the materials. And he hasn't, the other good news is he's got a lot of turnover of his products. So, he has to keep it in storage to be able to, uh, to keep, keep inventory on his storage space. Um, we believe that we don't need, and I'll let Mr. Clancy address this. We believe that we don't need any easements. The current conditions which make the building, um, uh, not need certain setback requirements are insistings of, have been insistent since the building was constructed. And it's not any, not anything that the condition is going to do that will impact those issues. I'll put that in the turnover, Mr. Clancy. Do you want to swear me in for worship?
Yeah, this is informal.
Okay. Jim Clancy, um, press your age and your answer, however. What we're looking to do is basically put an addition on the back side. I believe it's sixth added. Um, be a two-story addition just for storage. No long space. Um, there is some pre-existing conditions. The parking butts up close to the sidewalk, which is a pre-existing condition. We're not looking to change that. Um, there is some improvements where I believe we can get cross-access agreements between the VFW and purchaser. Um, there might be a little restriking we need to do, but for the most part, um, it's a very simple application. There was, uh, some confusion on the zoning because when I talked with John, there was a, um, a schedule that didn't agree with the ordinance. And I'll let John discuss that rather than me, if you would like to jump in there, John.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Clancy pointed out that online there was a schedule of limitations for, for zoning information, uh, which for the commercial zone, the front yard setback was different than what was actually written in the ordinance. And I spoke with Joyce, and she went back and couldn't find any ordinances that, that supported the schedule. And I believe that's been updated online.
And unfortunately, our plan doesn't show that because it happened just before.
And that would affect the setback on six. So, are you saying you'll comply with the ten foot?
Um, actually, we're, we're asking for the variance for the five because we're trying to get as much space as we can. Um, we know that we don't need the fifty percent along the road, but we know that the, um, the VFW is closer than that. Unfortunately, the, um, the auto place is setback for it, but it faces the Black Horse Pike. So, we, we will ask for what we need for that just so we can get the additional area that helps support the, uh, the compliance store. It's one of those roads, um, that's kind of like, you don't have a lot of, um, frontage,
Once you get within a foot of the property line, I don't think it really matters. The access to it is one of the issues.
You gotta be careful with separation between buildings up to.
Yeah, except five hundred separation, otherwise you got a two and a half hour firewall. But that's not an issue with block. So that could be easily maintained. So like I said, it's whatever the board feels comfortable with. If you want us to be a foot off the property line, on the property line, I'd say at least six inches off so you don't have it in person. Because obviously, when you get that close, you're gonna have one surveyor saying you're here, you're gonna have another surveyor saying you're here.
You're gonna have winters on that facade too, on that Sixth Street side of it.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna have winters on the facade here.
Yeah, not on the, well, not on the storage area.
On Sixth Street side.
You won't have windows on that side?
Yeah.
And that's the side.
That's it right here, right there.
Yeah, that's the facade. Sixth Street's okay. Well, that's Sixth Street, not the side door. The side door could be straight block.
We'll talk then from the Sixth Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But the side door, we can do straight blocks, so it wouldn't be the two and a half hour fire rating, so that we can go as close to that property line as you wish us to allow. And I would say, no, I want to be at least six inches off that property line. If you want us to be more, you tell us.
But in order to, if you were to maintain a ten foot on Sixth Avenue, you'd be losing about two hundred eighty square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Which would mean you'd have to walk the side by three feet.
Times two, right?
Yeah.
First and second floor?
All right, I'm just talking footprint.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So if you lose two hundred eighty eight square feet, you bump the other side out three or four feet, you make that back up.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you still have some separation between the buildings you can see on the sidewalk.
So is that what the board is kind of leaning towards? Because we can do that.
Well, I would just put one caution there. I don't know.
Maybe just the first thing.
I don't need the answer, because I like.
It's a first ingredient there or something, something.
Gotta be a way. We don't want anybody congregate in that space between the two buildings.
That's what you gotta take care of.
You know what I mean? It could be a place to put all kinds of junk in there. Maybe we could talk to somebody, maybe we could put.
We can put a six-foot fence across there, chain link fence, to stop them from going in and out of there with the lock on it. If you want it eight foot high, we could do it eight foot high.
I only said it because I know people dump on behind that building there. If they get there, I don't know.
I know if you're saying, I had somebody stuff a shirt in my bed plate for my sewage plate. That was fun.
Please.
Okay.
National Park.
Uh-huh. The land of the free. But.
Well, I'm happy that you guys are doing very well in that you need additional storage spaces. It's very, it's encouraging to know that you guys are doing well and you're gonna be in town for a long time. I think you guys have a nice business there. I've visited a number of times and I think you guys do a good job.
That's our plan. I mean, that's my plan's plan. He's got long-term plans for that site and for this camp.
So what's going with the parking again? Because Jim, the one fallback of this property has always been to have parking in the front. How it's just dangerous getting out on the background of Black Horse Pike, just like doing one of these things. You're gonna get parking from the VFW, you said you have these things?
Well, what's going on? And I'll recap real quickly. First, I'm getting the feeling the board would prefer the ten foot off of Sixth Street. Correct me if I'm wrong, and squeeze the sidelines so we get the same square footage. We're gonna lose about ten spaces by putting this new building in within that area off of Sixth Street. That area is shared both by the sports center and the VFW. Parking along the Black Horse Pike. My eyes are closed. If John has a better idea, I'm all ears.
You're not looking to.
We're not gonna change anything.
You're not looking to have a new entrance for customers from the shared park.
The only thing we're gonna do is shift the entrance. Right. So the other thing we're really doing, we're adding the building, losing some spaces, and shifting the driveway over on Sixth Street. But we still feel we have more than sufficient parking for everything that's going forward. So if the board's happy with that, I'd like to turn it over to John, give his comments, and then if everybody's in agreement, we'll come forward with the site plan.
Anyone have any questions, though?
I'd give them my comments. I don't have any details right now.
Can you throw something pretty quick so we can get it designed for the next agenda, John? Remember, you're gonna be dunking doughnuts, dunking doughnuts.
I have a second. All right. All right. I think, you know, Mr. Pod is, you know, the ten foot. I think you can accommodate that and meet the ordinance, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Any other concerns, trash, or lighting, or?
Silence. Nah, nah, nah.
Silence?
I pulled an hour.
Sure you're the way. It's a pathway. Tony, it's a beautiful pathway.
It's gotta have light.
The trash, trash.
We can light that up good for you.
Is near the VFW.
I told you.
It's on Gravel Road.
We'll light that up good for you.
As I proposed.
We'll put some wall packs along that whole side so that it's bright, so when these drives by, they can see it.
This building is just an annex for sports area, right?
Yes, correct.
And you're not proposing any signs on the door?
No, no. I should wanna say welcome to Runnymede or something.
They're gonna eliminate a variance.
You may need one side door.
Yeah, but the other one's less interesting.
Right, yeah.
Did you try to find that apartment? Or you used to?
I believe me, I sold the value of areas sitting there looking at paper. I walked in, it's like.
Is it just gonna be a rough face block, or what were you thinking on the outside?
Well, on the front end, it'll give us some aesthetics, just to help out the neighbors that we have on our shoes and look at the building once they do. The side is actually gonna be a concrete wall. What would be made out of concrete?
Something which is straight.
Straight, straight, and then the facade on Sixth Street is gonna be, we'll get the driver or stuff on.
I think so.
Yeah.
On the street, the little place.
Yes.
Do you still have public access from the actual parking area out to the Black Horse Pike? Is there still an area there?
Yeah, for a few.
Okay.
We're gonna continue that, but it's gonna.
You're not gonna reduce that any, right?
No. Unless the car dealer decides to make this car closer to the building.
Do you know what the height of these different things is? Is that the same?
So about thirty, thirty-five feet.
Do you? Quite nice.
Yeah. It's kinda hard to say because they have a fake facade out front, and probably closer to thirty-five, forty feet high. One Black Horse Pike. To the top of the chocolate cup. Maybe a little bit. Just a piece of it, yeah. Probably do it to the eighth, right?
Something nice, something new, something clean, and it could be an asset.
Great. Thank you so much, members. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for staying. Appreciate it.
Jim, Jim, you want to back?
Oh, no. Thanks, Mike. Good to see everybody.
Take care, guys.
No, 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 no.
All right, real quick, we kinda went long tonight. We wanted to discuss a little bit of stuff on the sign ordinance meeting and whatnot, but I think maybe we'll save that for next week. Hopefully, it will be quite simple. Under Old Business, I just have one question about some signs. We had a workshop meeting on the fifteenth, myself, Mr. Rockley, and Deb Lushen. In attendance was also Keith Knight. We've had a quite a bit of stuff, and again, I know it's late, so I guess we'll, you're gonna be here next meeting, correct? Anyway, for Mr. Neeko?
Yes.
So would you mind if we defer that to next week's in the, because of the time constraints? Okay. But we did talk about something that we thought would be positive for the town. Mirroring off of Barrington, we have a few public lots here in town, but they're not marked. If you go into Barrington, like up by Vito's, Vito's, Chicharilla, a couple of different places that has a blue sign with K for parking. I don't think anyone knows they're allowed to park in designated areas, you know what I mean? Those are not, they're not marked. I think they might be afraid they're gonna get a ticket if they park behind, say, the Polish Stella attached to it, which we need public parking. You know, I think it might be a good idea if we put signs up.
That's public parking, right?
I believe so.
Is it up by the barrow? Or is it just the applicant allowed?
You mentioned a while ago that we're, the public's about to park back there.
Maybe, that's what they've said.
Yeah, they've said that. So I don't know who owns it. But what I'm saying is, if we do have public parking.
Okay.
It would probably be a good idea that we mark it because there's nothing on the northbound side to park. You know, there's nowhere.
Well, one in the store, yeah, I went to that store.
Yes. I'm sorry. It used to be the five and ten, that one is coming back.
Again, I know, but did they? I don't recall him in there. They changed ordinance last year about allowing parking on that one side.
Five and double, we had a big care center.
Yeah, that wasn't.
You put no parking here.
I mean, even, you know, I was told they're allowed to park in this lot back here, in the Borough Ballot.
Okay, that's what it's called.
But I think people don't realize that if they see police cars in there, they might be afraid they're gonna get ticketed if they park in there. When you go into Haddonfield, when you go into Barrington, there are signs that just have a nice little P that says "public parking" this way. And I think it would just be a positive thing for the town to, if they have out-of-towners, or even frankly, people that live in town.
They don't know.
You don't know. And if it says, you know, you can't, you got police cars, you got fire trucks, you're afraid to park them, you don't wanna get ticketed. So I think it would be a positive thing for the public and the businesses if we could identify our public parking areas. And I'll leave that at that, and we'll talk about. We did have a nice workshop meeting on the fifteenth, and we'll talk about that next meeting. Under Communications, I'm glad Mr. Knight is here. We received a communication from Mayor Casey. Dear Mr. Knight, I just want you to know how grateful and appreciative I am for all your hard work in having the tree removed from Mr. Anderson's lot. You have truly been a blessing. Thank you again. So thank you for the service, Lord, community.
I wanted to share that with you. Sometimes you get a lot of, they do the feedback.
Well, and there you go. I'm glad you're here to share the positive ones, because you certainly deserve them.
They deserve your attention.
Another communication, zoning ordinance, three ninety-five dash eight. I bet that's what we require you to do. Do you have a copy of that there?
Yeah, make Mr. Ryan, yes, reference there. And the reference area of the communication, the zoning ordinance section, three ninety-five dash eight, Presidential R3 District. Are you concerned about mine? Yeah, about your communication. Okay, that's where. Three ninety-five eight makes reference to townhouses. But it also appears in the R3 zone. Yes, so it should be removed from the R3 zone in addition to the three ninety-five dash eight. Well, I believe three ninety-five dash eight is the R3. Just note it down. Oh, it's not? Let me check that. I did, in response to that letter, we did get a letter, or June did, which I got a copy of. Therein was the cause for a lot of concern.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, Keith, thank you.
Good night.
Welcome. R3, section three nine five dash eight, permitted uses townhouses. No, but that, actually, when you go to the R3 zone, that commission, it's, townhouses are also in there. Take on that problem, R3, the R, what, oh, we have three zones, R1, R2, R3. That's correct. I think, let's see, I don't think they are permitted in R2 zones? R3. R3, it appears to me that they're permitted under our current ordinance. Well, purpose of removing this, making reference to this ordinance section, it's in. It has to be removed from both, so it removes all doubt. Well, you're, we're gonna put this on the agenda for next day. The township committee has asked us to put it on the agenda for discussion. When we send it back, our resolution, the board, whatever you vote on, if you want it strictly for all three, I don't see it in the other two that day. I only see it in thirty-nine five dash eight, under the R3 district. That's the only place I see where it says townhouses or clustered dwellings are permitted.
Do we have a copy of the letter that was sent from Mayor Council to the board?
Yes, the, this is. Yeah, the Borough Council has requested, I advise you, that it's their opinion that the townhouse style development should be prohibited. The council will appreciate you placing that issue on your agenda at your next regular meeting. There, after please forward your recommendations by resolution through the council for the purposes of amending the zoning ordinance and our master plan. So that's a statutory procedure which we're following. We sent a letter to them saying that we were concerned, if they were concerned about townhouse development under thirty-nine, three nine five dash eight, if they were concerned, the procedure would be to send us a letter to review it at an open meeting, and then we send our recommendations by way of a resolution back to township council. I think if people wanna read the definition, park in R3, eighty by a hundred, the lots are delineated. There's a thing in there about, about the corner lots, so about two front yards. In there, it says that townhouses are permitted use. Yes, it does. It does say it's permitted use in R, in three ninety-five dash eight. I'm talking about just the R3 zone, not this.
I think that, what we're hoping is that, I think council intends for this board to look at the ordinances, wherever they would be, like you said, if it is in the R3, if it's on three nine five, just come out with an amendment to the master plan. Land use ordinance, and I think that council will definitely consider what we've.
Okay, I thought we were only gonna act on the request of the solicitor. And if we act on that, then we leave the R3 zone.
No, no, I think council's given a specific, you guys asked us to look at townhouses, and I think we felt that it was proper to look at townhouses, and I think our letter states that. And we'd like this board to amend the use of townhouses in the Borough Runnymede. Wherever you guys, wherever this board would recommend, a complete restriction of that, or whatever, whatever the board wants to do, I think that's what our letter said.
Yeah, that's right, right. So if you, effectively, if you want a general elimination, or you want, you want to eliminate clustered housing, that's your. Our preference is two places, is a reference here and a reference to the R3 zone. So the only thing we're deficient in right now here is making sure it gets removed from the R3 zone. Any zone you, any zone that you would want it removed from?
I mean, typically, we have a committee that might go and.
I agree with you. The only place that's permitted now is in the R3 zone.
Would we typically, would the chairman appoint like a committee to make an amendment for this ordinance, bring it back to its body?
What happens next is, it has to be scheduled for at a public meeting, the discussion. It should be, it should be published that the board is going to discuss that and make recommendations with town council regarding recommended changes to the master D. So we have a public meeting, and at that time.
You still have a committee to make a recommendation to the board?
No, the board would make it.
Okay.
Yeah, the board would make it. So the board discussed it, the board discussed it at a regular meeting.
Okay, that's a regular meeting.
Now, when we make a resolution, that's a recommendation, we send that back to township committee. Then they would do the ordinance, then they'd have your readings and whatever.
What I'm saying, if we have a little workshop to get this moving, you know.
Frankly, Nick, I don't think it's gonna take a whole lot to get it moving. We've already had the discussion.
You think it's done?
Well, we've had the discussion, and I think we all realize that we dodged a bullet with a big application. And I'm not trying to speak for everyone, but I have spoken to everyone.
I agree with Nick's recommendation.
Yeah.
There's another thing we could take care of in the R1 and R2.
Yeah.
Make corner lots, two front yards, and it'll do away with this sort of activity that you have all over town. You can make, you can make a resolution, I mean, you can make a recommendation, anything you want.
Well, I think we ought to do one thing at a time. I think, I think we need to get, that's, we talked about, we wanted to get the townhouses off the board. It's where somebody else comes in, because if somebody else comes in, makes an application to build townhouses, then we have a pending application and we can't act on it. So we need to do this as proactively as we possibly can. I would recommend that at the next meeting, we do it under Old Business.
Just a point of order.
No, I appreciate it.
Jim and I would put this on the next meeting, the agenda, or whatever you can, however you put it in. Publish, when you give your regular notice, I would, I know, you don't, when the, the notice that you give, you don't list every application, correct?
No.
All right, but what I would do is notice that the board is going to discuss a recommendations to change the master D. So the public has a right to come ask, and they can put their input.
I will thank you when I read it.
And that'll be fine, I haven't read that yet.
That's why council moves so quickly. I mean, you sent the letter, within the next meeting, we had.
Yeah, we had back.
We had it back.
It was from, we understood.
Yeah. Had you taken it.
With that, I'd like to open the good and welfare portion of the meeting. Is anyone out in the public who wishes to speak on any matter? Please come forward and be heard.
See, no one. I'm sorry. I didn't hear it.
Good evening.
Good evening. John's great, well, see you later. Thank you for being generous.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Now, the positive is always negative. I'd ask the borough, I guess the borough's something that ways. I'm gonna ask a question. Why do you do wheel copies? Costs more money. We're gonna make the agenda, why don't you go and turn it back, you're running through the conversation.
That's our, that's our prerogative.
That's their preference.
Just that.
Okay.
That's their preference.
So I have room to write.
With the, point of your solicitor, watch, watch for the video tape.
Yes.
How, how does, who is your solicitor?
We have the joint solicitation of Carlomir and Rowan. They are our solicitor. What the agreement has been is if Mr. Rowan begins one application, in other words, if you were to come in and your application were to be continued, Mr. Rowan would see your application through. If Mr. Carlomir comes in and he begins an application for Mr. Dickinson to do a subdivision, if this application gets continued, Mr. Carlomir sees his application through. We have the firm of Carlomir and Rowan as our solicitor.
That normal, and that allowed by, by law.
It's done in Berlin Township, you serve there. David Cartney, I can send you a couple of resolutions.
Outside of Mr. Carlomir's. Is there any other place that appoints a borough? It's like the borough's solicitor, even though the borough has the same, within the same term, it specifically appoints an individual as the solicitor of record. When you have a bond counsel, you would appoint a firm such as Park Runway or Park of Staff.
Well, that's what we do with Mr. Pettit. With Pettit Associates is our, our engineer. So if Mr. Pettit is not here, then he has one of his undergraduates come in and serves in his capacity. So Pettit Associates is not, that's not sort of John Pettit. It's Pettit Associates is awarded the borough engineer or the thing for engineer capacity.
But he's in the solicitor position.
And usually, an individual is named.
Kennedy, it could be a firm. I just had a communication, Mr. Kennedy is the appointed solicitor for this power. I just had a communication from his law firm regarding the council requesting that we review part of the master D that's signed by a member of the law firm. We could talk about it.
Leonard Wood. Leonard, what is the solicitor of this borough?
Well, then.
It just changed.
Oh, okay, I don't.
Knowledge.
So this board, this board, if this board did sue, who is the solicitor of record? Mr. Carlomir or herself?
Both Carlomir and Rowan.
Why would it be advantageous for us to have two men to represent this at firm?
I have never seen it in all the board meetings I ever gone to. Now, I've seen where you would appoint, you would appoint person A, and if they're not here, you know, a member of the.
Eight one A.
But I've never seen when you.
But I think the chairman made it clear that it's an application, the board doesn't always have applications every month and.
Right, but it doesn't, it seems, it seems like a firm, two people, there doesn't seem like the board has a solicitor of record.
Matter of fact, the RFP went out, said, who in your law firm is going to represent the Borough Runnymede? And one of them named two people.
And I'm asking.
Not Mr. Engineer.
It's that's the last.
Not Mr. Engineer and Solicitor.
How the borough, if there are any states, it's allowed, it's a solicitor.
Excuse me. Do you'd like to direct a question to the chair to the mayor? Did you just, the mayor just say, regarding my question, is he ridiculous?
I, you.
Did I? Yes.
Don't you business, but I said.
I mean, we, I can go back and I can pull this tape.
What's your reason, sir? What's your point, sir?
I think a board member here just thought a public question ridiculous.
Okay, well, having said that, again, I said I didn't hear, do you have another question on the floor? Happy to entertain.
At this point, I have a general idea. I wanted to try to understand.
Sure, okay.
That's what I was trying to do. And it called ridiculous. Shame. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Well, I think your question was answered.
Right. It was, because I have it called ridiculous. There's a certain, I was, there's a certain, I was just trying to see whether it was a problem or not. Asked a few questions about it.
And that's been answered several times.
It was. I don't think it's ridiculous. What? Especially.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else in the public wishing to speak this evening?
No, we have the public person in the meeting closed.
Second?
Second.
Do we have a motion to put the public person in the meeting? Is anyone else eventing a little before we adjourn for this evening?
Let's adjourn.
Just a quick, please, just, I think that, in those little meeting, council's, council's in the process right now of amending the ordinance also to clarify the code enforcement officials' role. And one of the things that we've had first reading on is to create, the code enforcement official would also become the zoning official. Because we're separating the construction and zoning with the code enforcement and zoning, because this council feels that those two things go together. And being here this evening and watching Mr. Knight speak to this board, I can see that, I think it's gonna be a good decision that he would help us out both on the zoning side and on the code enforcement side. So hopefully, we'll be able to work this out by next month.
He gives things a little traction.
Yes, he does. And I think that it would be a good move. The council's looking to increase his hours, which was something that was talked about even in previous years, that there was more, he needed more time to do these things, but also to give the ability to show up at these meetings and to help report to council for changes in the zoning ordinance. I think this board has seen that there's little changes that need to be amended in our land use and a lot of our ordinances, and I think Keith would be, you know, an asset to getting it accomplished.
Well, yes, because Keith, and he came to our sign ordinance workshop at my behalf as a courtesy. He came here this evening at my behalf as a courtesy. Would Mayor and council facilitate him being paid to attend every meeting? So I mean, frankly, one of my things was, I really like having someone from the code enforcement office be present at these meetings, because there are questions that frankly were not qualified to answer when it comes to certain rules and regulations. And I think having the code official here certainly lends credence to what we're.
Well, I think that's what the intent is. If he becomes also our zoning official, he becomes our zoning and code enforcement official. That's the, how we're gonna, we're just making a few changes in the ordinance, just carving it out on one spot and putting it somewhere else. And, you know, that would be an opportunity, absolutely. If this board felt it was necessary that he were to show up for things. And I think that it's a reasonable request. I think there's always financial concerns and things like that.
And I don't think of any of his kindness. And of course, if there were not any applications on the docket, who were just going to have a general, you know, quick meeting? I wouldn't ask his presence to be here, but I really feel a lot more comfortable, you know, having these types of discussions when there are questions, addresses, offering to be here to address them.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's something that's definitely reasonable.
Well, we would certainly appreciate if you could facilitate any.